It's time I'd like to call on Mr. Frank Morales to give an indication, please.
Eterna Father, we humbly offer thee a poor presence in that of the whole of humanity, from the beginning to the end of the world, at all the masses that ever have or ever will be prayed. We offer thee all the pains, sufferings, prayers, sacrifices, joys, and relaxations of our lives, in union with those of our Lord Jesus Christ here on earth. May the most precious blood of Christ, all his blood and wounds and agony, save us through the sorrowful and immaculate heart of Mary. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their public forces that stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome you all to our meeting tonight, and behalf of the commission, wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and hope you all get to spend some time off with your families. But in the meantime, we'll continue with our meeting and go to Citizen Communication. So Amanda?
Mayor, we have two. We have Rolando Lassano, 2410 Riverside Drive, and he wants to speak on item number three on the agenda of the...
Okay.
On the agenda, Mayor. Item presentation by Rolando Rios on the 2020 redistricting plan for the city of Harlingen.
I don't see Ms. Gamas, if she comes in, we'll call her.
Okay, Mayor.
All right, and that was all that's on there. We'll call Mr. Lassano on item three.
Yes.
All right. Item one is the approval of the minutes of the joint meeting of the City Commission and Harlingen Development Corporation of March 30th, 2021, the special City Commission meeting of June 9th, 2021, and the regular City Commission meeting of August 18th, 2021. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing now, is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, and the motion carries. Consent agenda items 2A through D, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, and the motion carries. Item three, a presentation by Rolando El Rios on the 2020 redistricting plan for the city of Harlingen.
Mayor, Mr. Commission.
I'd like the motion that we tabled this item, because I'm not grown up with the fact that we only got one option, and I really would like to...
Before we get a second, before we get a second on that, I would like, I'd like Gabriel to talk to us about the timeframe.
Yes, Mayor. We did have one option that was presented to us by Mr. Rios. He was scheduled to join us by Zoom today, but somebody came up at the last minute, and he advised me that he would not be able to be here by Zoom today. He did say he would make the next meeting in January. He did say that we had time to actually adopt a plan in January to meet the timeline for the election in May. There was one comment that was submitted to Mr. Rios regarding the map that was submitted to you. He did provide a second alternate to that, but it was too late to include in your packet. I have a copy that I can hand out to everybody, but I certainly don't expect for there to be action, because you may have some questions from Mr. Rios that we may not be able to answer as to why he chose the boundaries that he did.
Okay, so he said that we have, that we have time?
Yes, sir, we do.
And what, how much did he say, what the deadline, is there a deadline?
No, but he anticipated that we would either have it approved by the second meeting in January, given if there were any comments from the commission, in the first meeting in January, make some changes to the, to the boundaries.
Is there any way that we can get, like, maybe schedule a workshop with him so that we can go over?
Yes, we can.
Well, that's what I was going to suggest, Mayor, we can, whenever the council is available, we schedule some kind of workshop and get a more detailed understanding of each individual district and, you know, the whole, the whole process, right? And so we're, we make the more informed decision.
Would you like to have the conference scheduled with him this month, or you want to wait till January?
January.
Probably in January.
January, okay. Well, we have the first meeting in...
But I don't want to do it in a meeting. I want, I'd like to do a workshop.
Workshop.
So we can get all the questions answered, and then, and then when, that we were prepared by the meeting, and everybody's gone to see what was being proposed.
Okay, so perhaps after our City Commission meeting, we can schedule something with him. Okay? After five o'clock.
So it's a motion to...
Well, I mean, does anybody, I mean, does anybody have any problem with just having a workshop early in, early in January?
That works.
Don't we get all, the first, when is the first meeting in January?
It is the third or fourth.
The third or fourth.
Yeah.
It's on the...
It's, I'm sorry, it's on the fifth, January 5th. January 5th is the first meeting in January. So we could have it...
Maybe the third or the fourth.
Well, that would be the era, you know, we could have a workshop before, we could have a workshop before the meeting, like we have done in, in the past.
We'd have to schedule it at five o'clock, I think. Because of the ordinance that we adopted, we have to schedule it at five o'clock?
Yeah, no, I'd like to do one, really spend time on it, right? I mean, like, maybe the third or the fourth.
Well, as many times, as much time as the commission wants, but I just don't think there's any reason to delay it if the commission wants to, to talk about it. We should probably put it on the next agenda, at, at the next meeting.
I agree with the...
We can also set up a workshop.
I agree with the mayor, we'll have the, we should have the meeting on the redistricting, on the, the next one, the fifth, and we can, like Richard said, we could schedule that on maybe the third or the fourth, whichever is more convenient.
I think the fourth would be better, because a lot of us may not be here on Monday, the third, so the fourth is Tuesday, we can do that at 5:30, if you'd like.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, well, we have a motion to table, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, that item is tabled. Item four, consideration of possible action to approve a resolution to adopt the real, we're going to...
We have to pass that.
That needs to be tabled as well, is there a motion to table?
Motion to table on four.
Second.
Motion, second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, and the motion carries. Item five, public hearing to consider ordinance on first reading to rezone from general retail GR district to planned development PD district for single-family and multifamily use for 66.902 acres out of lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8, block 146, San Benito Land and Water Company subdivision located on the northwest corner of Hayne Road and FM 509.
Mayor, City Commission, good evening. We have a proposed development that requires a zoning change to planned development district. The location, this is the... Is this thing on? Okay, yeah, it was off. Sorry. Okay, so this is the property we're discussing, and it's, this is Hayne Street, and this is FM 509, and this is East Treasure Hills Boulevard, so it's a large property here. The zoning right now is general retail district, the proposed zoning is planned development district. This is the aerial photograph of the property, so it's all agricultural land right now. And this is the proposed layout, this is the same developer for Tres Lago subdivision in McAllen, and Mr. Rhodes, the developer, he's proposing a similar subdivision here in Harlingen, which follows the, the format for his subdivisions, which is the curved streets, but they, in, on Hayne Road, he is proposing some apartments in the front, and a commercial property at the corner of Hayne and FM 509, and then the rest are going to be single-family homes. That's a picture of the property. And it's in line with the comprehensive plan, because the comprehensive plan calls for low family, low density residential, the majority of this development is low-density residential. Staff recommends approval, subject to compliance with drainage requirements from engineering, and compliance with the fire department, and compliance with the building codes. Planning and zoning commission held a public hearing on December 8th, and no one spoke in opposition to the request, and they unanimously recommended approval of the planned development district for this property.
All right, go to item A, which is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for or against this ordinance?
Good evening, Mayor, Rolando Lassano. At that meeting that he mentioned on the 8th, I thought I spoke a little bit about it, and I think I have one point I'd like to make, that that intersection, a major intersection, is adjacent to a fair community of San Benito. And I, and I think San Benito has some good qualities, particularly because it's in school. It's a large school there, catty corner from that property. And cleverly, Mr. Salvante said that the majority of it is for housing, but that area closest to the school is commercial. And I would hope that the commission might deal with the builder and suggest that there not be any bait shops, well, just across the street from a major school, even if it's not Harlingen. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak for or against this rezoning? Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing and go to item B, which is consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading to rezone from general retail GR district planned development PD district for single-family and multifamily uses for 66.902 acres out of lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8, block 146, San Benito Land and Water Company subdivision located on the northwest corner of Hayne Road and FM 506. I'll ask the city attorney to read the caption.
All right. Item B, consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading to rezone from general retail district to planned development PD district for single-family and multifamily uses for 66.902 acres out of lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8, block 146, San Benito Land and Water Company subdivision located on the northwest corner of Hayne Road and FM 509.
All right, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign.
Thank you so much.
Motion carries. We have Mr. Rhodes, the developer, I think, is in, is in the audience. He presented at the Water Works Board meeting last, earlier this month or last month, and we just want to welcome you to Harlingen. Thank you for making the investment and, and working on this development. We're excited about it.
Hopefully the first of several.
Great, thank you. Item six, consideration of possible action to accept bids and award the contract for the CDBG Fillmore Avenue Street Improvement Project bid number 2022-02 to the lowest responsible bidder and waive any informalities.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. One of the projects that we had approved in the 2020-2021 CDBG action plan was the reconstruction of Fillmore Avenue, a portion of it from M Street to J Street. We went out for bids October 19th. We did receive three bids. The bids were in the amount of $199,623, $163,054, and $142,353.40. So we are here today requesting or asking if you all would consider awarding the contract to the lowest bidder, which is Ream Construction, for $142,353.40.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
Excuse me. How much are you allowing, any, any amounts for change orders?
Our, the project was awarded, or the budget for this project was $159,974. So that is what we have budgeted of CDBG funds.
How much, $159, what?
$159,974.
But do you, his question is, do you have any, in the contract they've awarded, do you have any wording on change orders, or is specific to change orders?
I do believe it's, it allows, just like all the other projects, I believe it's 25%.
25%, usually what we can do without having to come back and, and take any major action. There are some reserves in this particular budget that if we have an overrun, we can actually allocate that towards the project.
But...
No, I think to answer your question, the answer is no.
The concern that I, I think I share with Mr. Maz is that they may be, become the lowest bidder, but then after change orders, they're not.
Yeah.
Okay? That's why, in my opinion, you put restrictive change orders, that they would have to come back for an approval, or it'd have to be a justifiable change order.
Yeah, we don't normally...
And not in the scope of work that's normally done.
Yeah, we don't normally have a line item for change orders in the project itself. There's usually a small for contingencies, but it's usually less than 10%.
No, I understand, but that's, that's how they get around, that's why I tell you about the procurement process that we have is broken, and, and we have to do a, and it's just, it's just to be cautious. I don't, I don't know the...
Andy's not here.
Richard.
I think what, what, there's a 25% included in the, in the total that y'all got, so it may be, it may end up costing less, but they, they put that in the budget, so that way, if there is any change orders, they'll, they're able to cover it with that, what they're requesting.
We normally just bid out the, and award the dollar amount that they, they bid to us. If there's an issue that comes up, we normally have to consider that with the engineer, and if it's a larger amount, we just can't do it, because it'll go above the...
Have we done, has that company done work for us before, or any other city?
Yes, sir, they have.
What, what projects have they done here?
So they have done the Street Improvement Project, I think it was not this last fiscal year, but the year before that.
Which, did we have any issues with, with the...
No, Ream's a good firm contractor, and they've done good jobs for us.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Is there any to award, award the contract for staff's recommendation? Is there any other discussion?
Let me ask one more question, Peter. Mr. Sanchez over there is vouching for, for the company, so we can assume that 10 years from now, once the project is completed, the street's still going to hold true, correct?
Well, that's kind of typically the, it's a rehab program, what we have. So the engineering department looks at the infrastructure, the structural strength of the roadway itself, but then again, we also have a, the typical pavement cross-section or pavement design. Now, based on traffic volumes, if they change and so forth, I mean, the guarantee is, is anything between five to 10 years.
Okay. There's, there's a street that was done, it's a link in between Dixieland to Palm Court or Palm, at the end of the road where the apartments are at. That was an outside firm that did that.
Correct.
And I've driven on that street many times, and I've never seen any issues there.
Sure.
Did that firm throw in a bid?
I couldn't tell you, Commissioner, we have, or I'd have to look at the bid documents. I'm thinking 2GS, or 2GS was the contractor that bid that, or did that work. And they did not, well, yeah, 2GS...
Well, you got 2GS?
2GS was the firm that did the work on Dixieland.
From, on Lincoln Street?
On Lincoln. From, I'm sorry, from Dixieland, from Lincoln North to Garrett Road.
Okay.
And we did that about three, maybe four years ago.
So that firm bid at this job for $199, and we're going to go with the lowest?
Yes.
Well, this was bid pursuant to the competitive bidding statute, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so we're obligated to accept the lowest responsible bidder?
The lowest responsible bidder.
And we can reject, we can reject them all and start all over. I'm not sure where, where you're going with this, Commissioner.
Well, my point is simple. We're going to go with the lowest. I'm concerned about the...
The state law requires us to go with the lowest responsible bidder.
Go with the lowest.
Yeah.
Okay.
The lowest responsible bidder, as long as they're qualified, if they're financially qualified.
And then my all concern is also the quality of work. Okay? So when I'm being told that 2GS did the work on Garrett Road or on, on Lincoln for its portion, and I've never seen any deterioration on that road, that stands out to me.
Well, again, Commissioner, base...
To me, it tells me that the quality of work is there from this company. Unfortunately, it's 54,000, 55,000 more than, than the lowest bid.
Dixieland, again, because it was a, it's a thoroughfare, collector roadway, the expectations of traffic are, of the volumes are a lot higher. So on that street, we went in there and we did a thicker pavement section on that. If I'm not mistaken, I think we did with, we went with 12 inches of caliche, two and a half, three inches of asphalt. So it's, it's a beefier pavement section, and you'll see that performance there that way.
So if it works out?
Well, I just, to his point, I just don't want it to be, the, the lowest bidder, but then they end up, they end up spending $200,000 anyway, you know, in change orders.
Well, again, the, the, the cost, the, the engineering department does say, the engineering estimate, when they solicit the, the funds from, from HUD or from CDBG, and so the, the budget is in line with that cost estimate. And again, it's, it's more or less in line with what the low bid is at this point.
Okay, is there any other, any other discussion or questions? We have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item seven, consideration of possible action to authorize the city manager to enter into an interlocal agreement with the city of Brownsville for use of their landfill for the disposal of all solid waste.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, good evening. Since 2011, the city has been transporting our solid waste, brush, debris, and some ash to the Edinburgh landfill. That contract that began is due to expire on December 31st, coming up in a couple of days. So we went out looking for alternatives, whether we stay with them or look for other municipalities or other sites. We went into negotiation with Brownsville. The city manager and I met with Mr. Noel Bernal, their city manager, and Mr. Armando Gutierrez, the public works director. And in your packet, you have a spreadsheet of our findings that we feel is, is great for the city. We are looking at approximately saving, and I say approximate because, you know, the number of solid waste increases, and these numbers were generated from an average of our, of one driver in particular, not, not the entire fleet that we have. So we're looking at an average of saving about 210,000, 800 per year. And also in your packet, you have the agreement that Brownsville has already presented to their city commission, and, and they approved it unanimously, so we bring it before you. We do have one minor change on section six. You'll see it in your, in your new packet, I think it was, it's not in your packet, I'm sorry, it's, it was left over. There's, there's a section that, for indemnity, that we...
That section 6B, that was, that was stricken, yes.
You don't, you have the spreadsheet on the, for the...
We, we do have it, Commissioner, and unfortunately, it's just as small as this one.
Oh, because I don't have it in my packet.
No, it's under your packet, Commissioner, it was left on your table.
It was left on the table, Bob.
As a separate document.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
It has more.
Hopefully you can, I apologize for that, it's just, it's a lot of numbers that we presented.
So I have a question, just a real quick question.
Yes, sir.
Is, is the calculation, the more, is it, the more we send, the more we save? Or, or is it, no matter what, we're going to save?
It's pretty much no matter what because of, of the distance, the proximity, right? Brownsville is approximately 58 miles round trip versus Edinburgh is 96 miles.
So you have the mileage, but you also have time?
Time of our employees.
Time, and then the wear and tear on the truck, right?
It's all here.
And Commissioner, one of the things that we're hoping to avoid is, we've had to shut down the landfill a few times, because we were down to three drivers at one time, and so going to, going to Brownsville would be a lot faster.
So this is, so this is going to allow you to do what? How does that save you with your personnel, using less personnel?
Well, we can use the same personnel and make sure that we comply with TCGQ and having our floor completely emptied every single night. That's, that's just one of the benefits.
We won't be paying overtime either as much.
Stress on our vehicles, stress on our drivers.
And is this a one-year?
No.
It's a 10-year.
It's a, it's a, it's a 10-year contract, but it renews after, it's a five-year contract that renews after five years, I believe is what it is.
Do you have an out, do you have an out at any time?
Yes, yes, we do. City of Brownsville does, and so does City of Harlingen.
And Mr. Sossi, have you looked at the contract?
Yes, I have. That was the reason the indemnity provision was removed. It violates Article 11, Section 7 of the Texas Constitution.
Okay, so you're okay with that?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. So I want to congratulate the staff. I think this is a good, this is a good action to take, because I think it will not only save us money, it'll just be more efficient, because the landfill will be closer.
We certainly believe so, Mayor.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So we're looking forward to that.
Thank you. Item eight, consideration of possible action to approve a resolution terminating the city's 401A plan, creating a 457 plan administered by TCG, and terminating the 457 plan administered by AIG, the ally, IC. Gabe?
Mayor, Mr. Members of the Commission, as you know, the, the city of Harlingen took action to close, I'm sorry, to freeze a 401A retirement plan September of 2021. The plan had $13,000, $13,127,98 that was contributed by the participants and the city. Now, there were, and there still are outstanding loans in that particular 401A of $600,000. There are 93 participants that have outstanding loans with the 401A. So what we're recommending to do is to close a 401A as of March 1st, 2022, create a separate 457 that will be administered and offered by TCG. Now, once you close the plan, all funds will have to be transferred out. They can't leave them in the 401A anymore. So as of March 1st, every single dollar has to be taken out of the 401A plan. And there's, there are several options for the participants. They can transfer to any city-sponsored 457 plan, or they can choose their own IRA and transfer it to that. Right now, we have an ICMA 457 that has about $7.7 million in it, a Nationwide 457 that has $7 million, and Valick has about $712,000. What we're proposing to do is to close the plan that's offered by Valick, it's got very few participants, and then replace that with the 457 that's offered by TCG. The reason for doing that is because if you have a loan with the 401A plan, and you want to keep paying on it, you have to transfer your funds to the 457 offered by TCG, and then keep servicing that, that loan. If you go with somebody else, that loan becomes an unqualified disbursement, and you'll have to pay 20% taxes plus 10% penalty. So those that don't have any outstanding loans can choose ICMA, Nationwide, or their own IRA account. Or they can just take their, their cash and, and keep it, and just pay the penalty on, on the withdrawal from that 401A. The resolution will adopt all these agreements that'll be required to close the plan, advise the other 457 participant of what we're doing, and let Valick know that we're going to close their, their 457 plan. There is somebody here from TCG, David Rodriguez, if you have any questions for him?
Yeah, I have questions.
Okay.
David Rodriguez with TCG. Okay. I'm securities licensed. So a 401A is a retirement plan. A 457 is not a retirement plan. Legally, can people roll a retirement plan, a 401A, into a 457, which is not a retirement plan, without tax consequences?
Yes. That was changed years ago under the Pension Protection Act, where there was flexibility in rolling over 401As, 401Ks, 457s, IRAs, whatever it might be. The key with this for your employees is those employees with outstanding loans.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? What we do, and what our legal counsel indicated, those loans can be transferred over to us. We do have to re-loan the money, recalculate in the paperwork itself, but it allows that employee to continue payroll deductions to pay off that loan.
Right, and both you and I understand that should they, should that be a default in the payment process...
Right.
Heavy penalties and taxes are due, which would crush the, each individual employee who would...
Absolutely.
Who has done that. Now, and do you all understand, Gabe, do you all understand that as a deferred comp... Now, um, and do you all understand, Gabe, do you all understand that as a deferred comp, it legally, it's, legally it is the assets of the employee, but legally it's the assets of the city?
We are.
And should the city ever have to default, those assets are lost by the employee to the city creditors?
We, we as a city, um, there was a law that changed about four years ago that made the city become a fiduciary for the 457s, even though we don't contribute any money to that.
Right.
Um, so we, yes, we, we understand the, the implications of offering 457s. Um, a lot of employees did not want to keep the 401A, they wanted to actually roll their money into 457s. Um, that's up to them, uh, but by closing the plan, it will force every participant to have to remove their money from the 401A into another option, either a 457 or a Roth, I'm sorry, not a Roth, an IRA.
Okay, so, or, and I know, uh, seventy-two T rules apply to IRAs, but seventy-two Ts don't apply to 401s.
Correct. And the 457 is the same thing, quote-unquote, there's no ten percent penalty once you leave a 457 plan, or once you separate or terminate a.
Correct, you just pay income taxes on it because it's deferred compensation, it's compensation you didn't take per paycheck.
Yes, sir.
But you gave it to the city, uh, to hold for you in a plan for your benefit only.
Right, absolutely.
Now, I would like.
And I just would say one thing real quick, Gabe. We wanna make sure and do precise communication to the employees how vital this money is. I'm talking about the thirteen million in benefits that you provide them. That was matched by the city. You're going into TMRS brand-new with zero account balances. So this money is there for their pension. We wanna make sure and communicate with them those, those choices to use that money to roll it as a supplement to their TMRS benefits. Does that make sense? Okay?
So it makes total financial sense to me, but in my close to forty years of being securities licensed, I could tell you when people see their name on a number, people jump at it and they, they don't care about the damned tax consequences and the damned tax penalties until April fifteenth of the next year.
And, and you're absolutely right, Commissioner. I mean, obviously, we did meetings initially with employees back in, Sean Romero's our retirement specialist that's gonna be working these accounts here, he lives in Edinburgh. We did meetings back in November, December, with employees, and we had a lot of questions specifically what you're indicating. We just wanted to make sure and answer all of them for them to make sure they understood the can't talks, you know, the tax consequences, whatever it might be, so they, we're gonna keep them completely informed. Obviously, you're gonna have employees that see that balance, and what are they gonna do?
Pickup truck.
Buy a boat, buy a pickup truck, whatever it might be, and then the taxes hit them.
Right.
We're gonna do that communication, we're gonna do those meetings, obviously, it's important to us.
And then, um, so this would, can we have the slides back again?
Sure.
And I'm just asking all these questions so everybody here knows.
And these are the totals on the outstanding loans that are still being serviced by TCG, six-hundred, hundred thousand dollars. It's about ninety-three people that are paying into those loans right now. Now, some of them are relatively small, under a thousand dollars.
Right.
But there's, there's a, a few that are over fifty thousand dollars.
Right, right, okay. Um, next slide. Okay, so you would, your goal, in order for you to make money, is to roll these people's 401s into your 457?
Sure.
That's how you make your money?
Well, obviously, they're gonna have the choice, okay? So they would have the choice to roll it into three, one of three 457 plans you're still gonna have available, either Nationwide, ICMA, or RTCG plan. RTCG plan is gonna be identical to the 401A we administer. The lowest fees, the same investment choices, everything's gonna be in place, so it's gonna be the same investment platform.
So, so it is clear to the employee that they do have a choice, whatever they wanna do with their money?
They have that determination.
But, but if somebody has a loan outstanding, they would have to roll it into a 457 or suffer taxes and tax penalties, correct?
Into our 457.
Yes. If they do not have a loan outstanding, they could roll it over to any institution.
Correct.
Right. And will they know that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I will add, uh, very quickly, that some of those participants may not actually be employees any longer of the city, and therefore, they're gonna need some sort of assistance also. It may make most sense for them to roll into an IRA, but it also may make sense for us to continue to work with them, so.
Okay, let's talk about your 457 plan, and what investment options are there?
In that plan, it's gonna be all low-cost, all, all low-cost mutual funds that are in that plan. We, we, we'd like to choose funds that, uh, have the lowest expense ratios, I know there's some life-cycle funds in there or, or target date funds.
Do you provide any advice?
I do, I do, yes. I am a, a licensed securities advisor, correct, investment advisor representative.
What securities licenses do you have?
Sixty-five, sixty-five.
Sixty-five? Okay. Uh, then, um, so you don't use ETFs or stocks in your IRA?
Not in the plan, not in that 457.
Okay, and then, um, okay, so you would design a 457 investment plan, and how often could an individual, if they wish to choose, change their options, daily, weekly, monthly, annually?
With the platform, they're able to make changes as often as they need. Uh, they'll have an online account, they'll have a, a mobile app that they can, you know, get on and make those changes if necessary.
Okay. Thank you for answering my question.
Yes, sir.
Staff recommends approval of the resolution.
Motion approved.
Second. Okay, we have, we have a motion in a second, is there any, any discussion or any other questions? Uh, I appreciate your, uh, making it a point to try to explain, uh, to the, our employees, our former employees, all of the, uh, consequences of this, these changes and, uh, the potential tax consequences as well, but also, uh, encouraging the use of, the responsible, uh, use of this money, uh, as it's in, it was originally intended to provide for retirement and not, not really to be a bonus, you know? So we hope that, uh, you'll, you'll be able to communicate that.
Well, you know, and that's a good, excellent, excellent point, Mayor, because, to interrupt you, we wanna make sure we keep them completely informed, and we, we plan on doing more meetings with them, we'll look at the schedules on the timeline, and Sean and I will come back out and meet with these employees, whether it's departments or whatever, and what's good about Sean being here, he's up the street in Edinburgh, so he'll, he'll be that representative to take care of your employees.
Oh, we appreciate it, and I think that's an important focus of the, of this, uh, change. All right, so unless, without any other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Item nine, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading, amending Harlingen City Code, Chapter 6, Article 2, Division 2, Animal Shelter Advisory Committee, uh, Section 6.56, composition qualifications, appointments, filling vacancies, and to replace it with a new section.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, we requested the, uh, the approval of this ordinance amendment. This will, uh, change the composition of the, of the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee, and will open up the opportunity for other citizens to participate as well. We recommend approval.
It will have nine members, Mayor, uh, seven appointed by the commission, two by the mayor, and one each by the commissioners, and then have the, uh, the Humane Society Executive Director and the Animal Control Manager as, uh, two members.
What is it now? What is the composition now?
Right now, it has, I believe, it has one person from the, from the municipal court, one from the Humane Society, um, one from the city, and two members of, like, citizens, that's it.
And I think there's a vet that's gotta be on the board also.
Yeah, the vet has to be on the board.
There has to be on the board. So it's been really difficult to find a veterinarian willing to serve, so, and I think that's one of the changes that Luis, uh, talked about when he came up to talk to us last, at the last meeting, and so.
So this will remove the requirement of a veterinarian?
Yes.
Yes, yes, it will. And Josh went over the, uh, the changes with Luis at the Humane Society, and they both talked about it, and they, they felt comfortable with it.
And it'll remove the requirement to have somebody from the Humane Society on the advisory?
Uh, no, that, uh, the executive director will be on the board. Yes, sir. Along with the Animal Control, uh, Manager from the city of Harlingen.
Okay.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Well, I think we need to read the caption. I think Mark needs to read the caption.
Number nine, um, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading, amending Harlingen City Code, Chapter 6, Article 2, Division 2, Animal Shelter Advisory Committee, Section 6.56, composition qualifications, appointments, filling vacancies, and a replacement with the new section.
And now.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Item 10, consideration and possible action to approve installation of street bumps following streets Vista Verde Circle East and Vista Verde Circle West, from Vista Verde Circle North to Murphy Drive.
Mayor, the city engineer has looked at the request submitted by the commissioners, and the streets meet their criteria for street humps, so we're recommending approval of the request.
What does each street hump cost?
Um, Commissioner, I, I don't know offhand. I know we allocated funding to buy ten, ten of them.
Rodriguez, standing up, he may have the information.
The city commissioning our budget approved, uh, sixty thousand, and in fact, we're able to, uh, negotiate a better deal for them because we bought them in bulk. Uh, we have ten in stock, and we're getting ready to order ten more. And so we'll have twenty in a couple of months, we don't have, as if we start using the ones that we have now, we're gonna order an additional to replace those, and that should.
So if I'm doing the math in my head, each street bump is six thousand dollars?
Yes.
Okay.
But we're, we're looking cost to city employees and equipment and stuff, we averaged out about thirty, between thirty-four and thirty-six hundred per speed bump.
This is part of the annual, the annual program? This is just being part of?
Right, so, so when you add in.
It's already been budgeted.
When you add in labor plus, uh, equipment and supplies, then it's about ninety-six-hundred dollars per speed bump, more or less.
Okay.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion, second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Item 11, consideration and possible action regarding first reading of the city of Harlingen ordinance, amending Harlingen City Code, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 2, Division 3, Qualifications, Section 2.92, to remove residence requirement for the position. The sound was requested by Mayor Potemay Arribas, Commissioner Quintero.
Did you wanna provide some insight into what?
Just put on by the commissioner. Yeah, I, I felt that it was important that, um, that we, we remove that requirement. I understand the requirement for a city manager and for our directors, um, but for our professional services, I don't think it's necessary, and I, and I don't know of any other city that requires it.
I have a question for the attorney.
Mr.?
Is this the right, uh, chapter, article, division, and section 2.92?
Uh, yes. As far as I know. You want me to check it right now?
Please.
I believe it is.
Yeah, please, check it. So I'm guessing.
I believe it is, I, I looked at it.
You didn't write this up.
No, I wrote it at the request of the commissioner.
Okay.
Absolutely. Yeah, I told him what I wanted, and he made sure he read it correctly.
Motion to approve.
Second. I guess it's, uh, okay, motion, a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Item 12, board appointments, any board appointments?
I have none.
Any board appointments?
Yeah, let me try this one. Uh, reappoint Joshua Meadows to the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee.
I have one. Um, I'm gonna appoint Jim Young to the, um, Community Development Advisory Board.
Um, Commissioner, what others, I think the, uh, Josh is automatically appointed to the board, so you may want to.
Get somebody else?
Yes, sir.
No problem. You did take care of that, thank you.
Okay, withdraw that appointment, I'm sorry, what was that, what was your appointment?
Um, to the Community Development Advisory Board. Jim Young.
Okay. All right, is there a motion to approve board appointments?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Item 13, executive closed session regarding the following items. A, deliberation pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.0871, regarding commercial or financial information the government body has received from a business prospect that the governmental body seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the territory of the governmental body, and 551.0872, to deliberate and offer financial or other incentive to business prospect described by Section 1. Item B, consultation and legal counsel pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, to receive privileged attorney-client communication on confidential matter. C, consultation with legal counsel pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, to receive privileged attorney-client privilege communication on confidential matters pending litigation. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna be in executive session, meeting with our attorneys, and, uh, there is one item that could, we could take action on when we conclude that. Thank you. Okay, we are out of executive session at 7:22 PM, and we're gonna go to item 14, yeah, I mean, it's consideration and possible action to approve, it says item 12B, but I think it means, means 13B. Uh, there's a typographical error.
13B, that's correct, Mayor.
Is there a motion, is there a, okay, is there a, what is the motion?
Richard?
Okay, I'm sorry, is it, what item?
It's, uh, 13B.
It's gonna be 13B?
Is this on the audit?
Yes, sir.
So, yeah, and I'd like to motion that we, um, direct staff to, um, proceed with, um, the, um, Public Works Phase 1, uh, for now, and, and, and we'll, we'll address all the other, um, at a later time.
Second.
All right, there's a motion, a second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're adjourned, good night, have a safe evening.
Merry Christmas.